Okay, welcome everybody. It is July 25th. It is 4:02. We'll go ahead and follow this meeting to order. I'll go through roll call for planning commissioners. Howard Tripp. You see him connecting now. Abby Dolman here.
Right there.
Yeah.
Joey Edwards.
Yeah.
Lupe Bobedia.
Here.
And Jamie Seifer.
Here.
Great. And county commissioners. Commissioner Munch. She was here. Commissioner Marcella. And we'll start these very well set. Any changes or differences to the agenda? Nothing else. Um, we have minutes to approve from June 27. Because that's very few of minutes. Motion to approve. And move from June 27.
Second.
Okay, I'll favor three minutes from June 27. I.
I.
Um, any updates? Staff or board members? I'm going to just step out. At least now we can settle to thank everyone for that little bit of a hiccup and change to our upcoming agendas. So I appreciate everybody being able to be flexible and have to back. Anybody else have any updates or anything you'd like to share with group? On end of new business. First one is files 22-25 and 22-26. And one is request to table those to August 8, 2022. And so those files were noticed, fortunately. But we might go ahead and move those into our paper. So we're just looking for a motion to do that. Okay. Any questions around?
22-25 and 22-26 to August 8.
Okay, any questions? Coming from that. All in favor of the table of the August 8? File 22-27. Feeling I always look at anything as shorter. That's correct. Well, start with this. The Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners Oh, yeah. It'll take me a while. Okay, yep. The Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a joint public hearing. This statement I'm reading shall be incorporated into and made a part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on a conditional use permit application under section 3.6.1 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the conditional use permit application should be approved. In considering that matter, the commission will address the approval criteria set forth in sections 3.6.1.F of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to be followed in this hearing will be as follows. Number one, members of the commission and or board will disclose if there's any expertise communication. Two, the county staff will make their initial presentation. Three, the applicant may then make their own presentation. Four, after that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. Five, supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the commission and the board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the chair. Six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked to not submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point that you wish to make, simply say so. The chair will also require that all comments be made to the planning commission and the board, and that there be no dialogue between the applicant and the members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the chair will entertain a lunch to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing, and the commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will then leave the meeting, and this year the planning commission will entertain a motion on the application. A motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. One, approve the application with no conditions. Two, approve the application with recommended conditions. Three, end the application with newly identified conditions. Or four, deny the application. The planning director shall make a record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation of the commission. The commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings? And here again, I will now ask that each planning commissioner and then each county commissioner, if you have any expertise communications to be proven, so please disclose them now. I'll just go through local power trips.
I'm, yes, by the way, I had my hand up. The video or the audio is not coming through too good. Heather, I don't know if it's just my system or if it's everybody else that's on Zoom. But how about you, Lopee? Is yours coming through okay?
It's coming through, Howard, but it's also, yeah, I could hear the sound a little bit at a distance.
Yeah.
Does that sound any better? Does that sound better?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Perfect. Um, okay, I am asking if you have any expertise communication on the Schweiger ADU conditional use permit? And I'm going to go through Howard Tripp.
No.
Okay. Abby Dolman. Right through it. Joey Edwards. And Lupe Bobedia.
None.
And Jamie Seifer.
None.
Good, thank you. And now we move into step presentation. We have a contact issue. It may just be a moment. Oh, county commissioners, I don't know. Really have you in. Hi, I don't want any. I'm here. So much I can see. So, um, file 22-27 is an application for two accessory dwelling units in the business of district in Lakes. Um. I just got the stairs. The, this is a perfect scenario to illustrate our new code amendment that we were looking for a way to support better environmental outcomes in the village of Ten Lakes where. Yeah, sorry. That was a really good look out. Um, so this is a perfect example of what we were looking to do with that code amendment that we recently passed. And so I am going to turn it over to the applicant and just convince, kind of let him tell his story and how we got where we are. But we have been trying to find solutions to support rehabilitating dwelling units in the town of Ten Lakes. And I think this is going to be a very good example of where the ADU code amendment was intended to do its best work. And that is that these three small historic residents now have the opportunity to share a single septic system and be put back free person back into. As the applicant has to use within the application, he is looking to as housing to support the community in long-term mental solutions or primary uses. So I think that the whole basis of this application actually serves both purposes of the code amendment, both in a social aspect as well as an environmental outcome. Um, so the staff has provided a review of all of the standards. The accessibility, the number of units, of course, in the business of district, more than one when those two benefits that I just mentioned are present. Um, parking is a consideration. Ownership, these units will all have to stay in able ownership. Dimensional limitation, they will still have to meet all of the dimensional requirements of the business of district. And then adequate facilities, which includes water supply. This particular property is unique in the age of its water rights that will in fact support all three dwelling units. Um, a sewer service, again, we have engineered land that would be a shared system between all three units. Electricity, fire protection access, and of course, there's no permanent review. But those are all the standards associated with the district law. Um, the condition of approval for a conditional use permit, staff has gone through and through all of those approval criteria and given examples and ways in which this does support all of those criteria. And the only conditions that staff has for this particular application is an approval would be brought forward is the consolidation of the lots that an approved permit for the engine septic system is brought, is approved. And that those standards that I just mentioned, those all maybe are of his approval. And the many statements the applicant made, which in this case memorializes this community housing are all suggested conditions of approval. So if some questions, staff, I'd be happy to answer those or turn it over to the applicant. Any questions for Ann before we turn it over to the applicant?
Just to clarify, all of you sit on separate lots right now.
Um, they are, they still portion of, um. I sent over the aerial, actually, it's kind of passed. So they all, they kind of stood on like fragmented parts of one of the lots. Um, so currently the three sit on two lots, all three of them. But it's kind of a fragmented portion of lots five. Lot six. Kind of a fragmented portion. In the way that they are originally. So the new proposal would come in, the lot consolidation to making the lot line between lot five and six and creating a parcel. Of course, that can't be done until the commission. Okay, applicant, the floor is yours.
Thank you. To begin with, this is a long time coming, you know. Appreciate. And I think Ann and the team have done a good job and I will treat the departments. They're there. These properties are contributing elements, strong contributing elements. It's going to bring the right in the core of the town. And my wife and I bought these a few years ago. Part because we were the owners and we were third generation by our property. And we bought primarily the people from being straight off and in the core of the the historic district being redeveloped, whatever manner it would be redeveloped. And so that's when we started, October of 2020. And since then, Ann and Paul and others have worked with us very carefully with a lot of effort to get to this point. And actually to the point where we promote the change of the building. And I think, again, as Dan said, I think this is a perfect opportunity to have the code that would work well for the community and for the county itself. I go, what else except one thing? On the southern end of this property is the law building that served as the quarters for the county government in 2007. And other things that we used for were it was a hotel at one time, it was a general store. It housed the Carson State Coach Line between, between over the top. And it was used by a shopper for a long time. And it's just amazing that it's still there. And I don't want to confuse each here because we're just talking about these three blocks down. But somewhere down the, we would like to locate that building also into the virtuals. But that's for views, but additionally. It's going to take some work to get water and sewer and that. So that's something, like, it is part of the same property that's just being itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll ask, is there any questions from planning commission or commission? Well, we have Commissioner Marcella on. Now, or is that us? Okay. Um, so if there are any questions for the applicant or staff on this application prior to unsaving the meeting? Are we, do we have which, um? Which, do we have a primary dwelling unit on your, which one is that your primary unit?
One way.
One way. Hey.
The red house.
And then just, sorry, the permitting, the required, at least water say permitting will go through and take into account the, um. This is, this is one rhetorical, well, take into account all the use of the three buildings and should really be able to have the volumes and capacity for advantage all the way.
For all three properties in all features.
Any other questions or do we have anybody who'd like to make a motion? Be shy though.
I can make the motion if I can read.
Are we in public? Oh. Yeah, we're making a, sorry, here. We were, oh, you're, sorry, I just didn't bring out how many people. Um, sir, I know that you've joined in. Do you want to go ahead and sign an honest piece of paper? So the first thing would be to the floor of the public. Is there no public comment? Uh, motion to both public hearing. All in favor? I want it. Howard and Jamie. Um. Do we want to just go through the next two files without commissioners leaving through? Sure. Yeah, that's good to hear. Not to do. Well. I know you. Like, it means about briefly. Okay. Kayla can pause out for a minute. Just so we have a sense of that. Yeah, doesn't have to be three days. That's fine. Okay. Next step, we'll call you right back in. Will do. And Kayla, if you can hear us.
Hey. Ann, if you could, or if Sarah can just text me when you're ready for me to hop back on the Zoom, I'll hop right back on.
Okay, very good. Okay, so now back to.
Okay, it sounds like we're all good to approve this. Um, I move the planning commission to recommend approval of file number 22-27. Schweiger ADU conditional use permit, lots five and six, block 11, Ten Lakes to board the planning commission with the following conditions. Consolidation of lots five and six, lot 11, Ten Lakes. Two, approve LWTS permit for new shared septic system for three residential dwellings. Three, compliance with the Lake County Land Development Code, accessory dwelling unit standards. Section 5.3.1, D137. Four, all statements made by the applicant through submitted application documents and public hearing are the conditions of approval specifically, but not limited to the proposed use. And further finding, one, that the proposed conditional use is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies contained in the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. Two, that has condition that proposed conditional use informs the adequate public safety, transportation, utility, facilities will be available to serve the subject property while maintaining sufficient levels of service for existing development. Four, the proposed conditional use is not likely to be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare of senior residents which cause hardship for neighboring persons. Five, that proposed conditional use is sensitive with and in harmony with neighboring land uses and future intended land uses in the area. Six, the proposed conditional use will not result in overly intensive use of the land relative to the surrounding land. Seven, that has that as condition, the proposed conditional use will not result in traffic congestion or hazards to be hit during traffic. Eight, the proposed conditional use will not unnecessarily start a land on which such you could be located. I, the proposed cycle of conditional use is and will be approved in actual man or man hazards or that such hazards can and will be adequately mitigated. Logical or social, medical.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Okay, great. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Because we have our full mission tonight that we won't have roll call for Lupe or Jamie, but we'll call for Lance, Howard Tripp.
Dave.
Abby Dolman. Right through it. Joey Edwards. I'm covering one by. I think. We can invite our commissioners back in. We'll just take a moment to get the planning commissioner back in.
But it was like, I think it's just the ones.
Right, it's just a. Yes, I do.
Thank you. This is a really good example of people working together. It comes with the content. It's really good. Thank you.
I don't know.
It's been running, the vote later this fall. It ended, this project is very popular.
Yeah.
Love you, you restored that old log building too, just to preserve the logs that are, sure. Not in the best condition, you know. First one's just. Yeah.
Jamie, go ahead.
Thanks, Heather. I think this is cool that we're doing it. Just a quick point of process question. I was under the impression that Lupe was in fact a proper member of the planning commission and that I was the only alternate. That is also what it says on our website. And so I'm just curious. I know I don't get a vote either way. I just want to make sure we're counting all of the votes of all the people that should be getting them.
Yes, thank you very much because I, and I was not sure. And so Ann and I were just talking about it and that's what we had thought it was. But I think that actually you may be correct, Jamie. Um, so Lupe, I apologize.
Cool, thanks.
Appreciate the clarification, Jamie.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so Lupe, I'll go back to file 22-27. Are you, you got an eye vote online? The ADU conditional use permit that we just approved to include your vote on there. I, I do think we're supposed to have two alternates and five regular members. So we need to get some verification on that. Do you, but for now, we'll go ahead and add, because we don't have any options here so far. We can add your vote to that.
Yeah, so I approve as well.
I will clarify what happens if I were. It's always been five and two, but I don't know if it's a two. We have Commissioner Marcella back on. I'm going to go ahead and start on file 22-19. We're just going to be reading a couple of openings taken. So file 22-19 is the barrel of reclamation. Level mining drainage tops conditional use permit. Are we going to reuse the others? So we're going to, we're going to open both files at the same time here. We have file 22-19, which is the level mine drainage top septic. As well as file 22-21, which is the level mine drainage top site plan. Um, I get to read the same. All right, the Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a joint public hearing. This statement I'm reading shall be incorporated into and made part of the record on these proceedings. The planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on a conditional use permit application under six, I'm sorry, under section 3.6.1 of the Lake County Land Development Code. And simultaneously, the planning commission will open the site plan review pursuant to section 3.1.4. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the conditional use permit application and the site plan review should be approved. In considering that matter, the commission will address the approval criteria set forth in sections 3.6.1.F and 3.13.3 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to be followed in this hearing will be as follows. Number one, members of the commission and or board will disclose if there's any expertise communications. Two, the county staff will make their initial presentation. Three, the applicant may then make their own presentation. Four, after that, any other person either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. Five, supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the commission and the board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the chair. Six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point that you wish to make, please simply say. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant or irrelevant or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point that you wish to make, please simply say so. The chair will also require that all comments be made to the planning commission and the board, and that there will be no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing, and the commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will then leave the meeting, and the Chair of the Planning Commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. One, approve the application with no conditions. Two, approve the application with recommended conditions. Three, approve the application with newly identified conditions. Or four, deny the application. The Planning Director shall make record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation of the commission. The commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, I will now ask that each planning commissioner and each county commissioner, if you have any expertise communications to disclose, and if so. That now. Howard Tritts. No expertise communication.
Yeah, I still have a little trouble hearing you. You're asking expertise. I have no expertise.
Great, thank you. Abby Domon. Bryce Rillit. Joey Edwards. Okay, Gloria.
None.
And Jamie Seifer.
None.
Heather Lynn, none. Commissioner March? Nothing. Commissioner Marcela?
None.
Great.
Thank you so much. The first thing I want to note and make sure everyone is aware of. The Bureau of Reclamation is not required to follow state and local, local regulations in accordance with the United States Code. However, the Bureau is endeavoring to implement a good neighbor policy and follow P M and associated regulation. And in, it's absolutely evident that the Bureau has been implementing this good neighbor policy and, and for a long history, and, and we always believe that they will do so. I think it will be really beneficial to the commission and for county commissioners. I've asked the applicant to do just a brief presentation about the treatment plant to give us a little history and knowledge of why it exists and what its function is. And so I have asked Mark to go ahead and do a presentation for us just to give us the historic information and the progress associated with it.
All right, can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right, cool. Sorry, yeah, like Mr. Tritts, the, the audio's a little, anyway, so sorry if I ask you to repeat yourself. Anyway, I'm Mark Nance, and Janelle, are you there? Right on. Okay, so Janelle, you want me to try to share this thing?
Yes, please.
Okay. Did that work?
We got you.
Right on.
Cool.
All right, all right, so. So Janelle, you would, would you like to kick off our introductions?
You bet, absolutely. So we just wanna thank everybody for your time and consideration on this topic, and we knew we didn't really have to do it, but we just wanted to start from the get-go. It's a big project, very important, very good for the community and the whole ecosystem of our all consahed waters. And we're not really changing much about the fact that we take in really dirty water and we put out really clean water, and it's helping whatever bottom line, that's what we do. My name is Janelle Stefanic. I'm the supervisor at the Level Mining Drainage Treatment Plant, and I've been there about twenty-three years now, so it's a very exciting project for me, and I think you'll be excited about it as well. Mark Nance is the design team lead at our Technical Service Center in Denver, Colorado, so the Bureau of Rec has our own contingent of engineers who have pitched in to put this together over really about the last seven years. This has been a work in progress for quite some time. We've spoken to commissioners in the past a little bit to introduce the project, and we've been working with N and all for a couple of years. The fire department, we've talked to the county at the Boom Ridge, we were just speaking a little about it last week. Action plan exercise, what we do on a periodic basis. I don't wanna digress too much, but this is the Department of Interior, Bureau of Reclamation. They've recently changed our designation, but we're basically part of the purple region, and then we fall a little bit under the blue region, the way that they redistrict. A lot of, you know, a lot of federal agencies are kind of regrouping in different ways. So my main office is in Lublin, Colorado, in my local administration, and the regional office is in. Okay, next slide, please, Mark. So just a quick, we don't wanna bore you with too many details, but we're gonna talk about the location of the current and future facility, the history of the Leadville Mining Drainage Tunnel and ore treatment plant. And then Marco will visit about the technical detail that we've just been plant conditions, driving this change. Benefits of the new plant, of which we feel there are many, but we're gonna hit the ones that we can know most to the community externally, of ourselves. And then Marco quickly kind of overview on the requests we are making for you guys to consider today. And that'll be a site plan, C U P, and then a street plan, which I can be talking about. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so for those of you who may not be familiar, that Leadville Mining Drainage Tunnel and Treatment Plant are located north of town, about a mile off Highway ninety-one, that's County Road ninety-one B, also known a lot lately as River Road. And we are the big white building with the protruding side on the left side. With the, there's a detention pond right next to the building. That is the triangle shape that you see. And the purpose of the detention pond is, if for some reason the treatment plant stops working for a period of time, it will collect the water that comes by gravity, and then we pump it back in and make sure it gets treated before it moves into the river untreated. And so, as you can tell, we're nestled up very closely to Mountain Valley of Safe Community. We've taken a lot of great strides in the past to ensure the community safety of this subdivision, including the emergency action planning, the center of the ability to warn people that people have some kind of a facility. Any questions on that so far? Okay, next, please, Mark. Okay, so we're getting into kind of, the history is very long, and I love to top it off. I will be brief. Essentially, what you see on the right-hand side is the finished portion of the mine drainage tunnel. So at the portal, which is adjacent to the treatment plant, the first four hundred and sixty feet of the tunnel have been all pressure grounded and finished. And it's got the ventilation pipe on one side, has some test equipment on the right side, and basically has a sidewalk all the way down with trenches on the sides where the water drains from the bulkhead at the far end of four hundred and sixty feet, and then just flows into the treatment plant by gravity. The, on the bigger picture of the district, you see the county of Leadville, the long blue line is the Leadville Tunnel, eleven thousand two hundred feet long to the bend that you see, kind of at the bottom right corner, bends over to the new Mikado, but the actual terminal end of the tunnel is called the Robert and the Shaft. You thrive up Fifth Street, straight horse sculch, or ride your bike up there. You go around a couple of curves once it turns into dirt, and just below where the mineral belt trail crosses, the, the road is the Robert and the Shaft, as we can frame that, many of us are familiar with. Additionally, noteworthy on this slide is that all the little green dots are noting abandoned legacy, basically mine shafts or adits or workings that contribute to the light blue shaded area, which is what we call the mine pool, and that's the groundwater pool. Impacted names of private mine drainage. So we're, we're allowing the tunnel to drain all of that to the plant as well as around the Marion Shaft in that central part of Upper Golden Asick that you see a super sun site. You'll see the bomber low pond. Also take that surplus water runoff during spring runoff, and it comes in, it's introduced into the M S shaft via the Marion Shaft. And we treat that water as well to the energy gathering of the video. So that was a big step, and one of the first drivers of this new treatment plant, I think about two thousand and two, tried it out, and we ended up doing it ever since. That water's many thousand times more contaminated than just kind of the groundwater that we get, so it could be stretched on the facility that we have now.
Okay. Janelle, can we just check, I just wanna check in real quick that our Zoom people can hear everything.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Is everybody hearing everything good? Okay, okay, I just, just wanted to check in. It's a great advantage, so.
Thank you.
Okay, there, yeah.
So essentially, this treatment plant now is turned thirty last month in June. She's, she's getting to the end of her service life. For when you're doing work like this, of the quantity and quality of water that we're treating, it's pretty standard acceptable service life to be at thirty years, so that's why I think we've been planning this for several years to do a whole-scale replacement. At this point, it's, it just became too much to keep replacing a component here, a component there. Then something would need us to take off the roof, and it's known that it has changed. Then something would need us to separate the chemicals in that court has changed in the meantime, so mostly for safety reasons, also for reliability reasons, and finally, just for longevity reasons, we're gonna just do the whole thing, and so that's what brings us here today. Any questions on this slide? Go ahead, Mark, to the next team. We love this photo. I can't remember the name of the sweet fellow who did it. He's a local. Made this up for us, I think, I think in two thousand and eight, to help people visualize how this works, because it's all under three hundred and fifty or five hundred feet, we you know, the east side of Leadville. So at the far right, you have the portal, and he's showing the outbuildings. This is, you know, like from when they drove the tunnel, okay? And then how this tunnel proceeds into the mountain for two miles and intercepts some of these pretty well-known shafts. Most of these might be familiar with people who are into the mining district and laterals and adits that go in many, many directions. So the tunnel was driven in World War Two in the Korean conflict by the Bureau of Mines. And the purpose of the tunnel was always to drain groundwater by gravity rather than very expensive pumping that we had been doing in the early part of the century, and so that they could access the ore bodies for letting things from emissions to more effort. Okay, so that was always the purpose. Then in nineteen fifty-nine, the Bureau of Reclamation purchased the tunnel from B O M with the hopes that they could use the water for the Frank Arkansas Project as an augmentation for the trans mountain diversion that had just been a complete deserting community. Now, unfortunately for Reclamation, the water was entirely appropriated as a spring flow, so we had no rights to use the water. However, the Clean Water Act of nineteen seventy-two drove the E P A to issuing enforce, enforceable permits for point source discharges, which the water that's been coming from one source and going into a waterway in the United States, that it had to be cleaned up and treated before we can discharge it into the water. So we got our Clean Water Act permit. The purpose of the plant is simply to treat neutralized pH, remove heavy metals from the water prior to discharging it into the, for the Arkansas River.
Next, Mark.
All right. Awesome, thanks, Janelle. I'm gonna hop in here a little bit. Janelle's mentioned, you know, the, the facility's fairly old here, so there's a, we're, we're basically updating the facility, same treatment capacity as before is, is, is the project scope. We're just basically doing a couple of primary things. We're really updating the, to current codes. There are some things that were designed back, way back when, that they do differently now for, basically for worker safety. If, if you've ever had a chance to wander through the, get a tour from Janelle or others of the existing facility, you know, the inside is pretty cramped. You can see in the upper right-hand corner there, this slide, a view from up on top of the tanks. And this is, that's actually rather spacious compared to some of the other parts of the plant that Janelle and her folks have kept humming along for decades now. But anyway, so we're gonna, we definitely wanna improve the working conditions for the folks and also improve the, the treatment equipment itself. Basically, we're gonna end up with larger diameter tanks. The treatment tanks for the water itself, that's gonna mean that the water is gonna be treated even better than before. So, and improve, like it says here, redundancy, basically allow a, a little little more wiggle room when it comes time to work on the equipment. Fast, less downtime when they need to do maintenance. And so overall, just a lot of facility improvements. Yeah.
I think I just had this question, and we haven't talked about this prior, but this top right picture is really a cool illustration of our variance request. So this treatment plant was built without what called a bridge crane. They're big and they're expensive, and they take up a lot of space, so the roof would be much higher if we had one. However, for when we're considering replacing versus rebuilding the whole thing, one of the big problems is we don't have any way to pull, each of those tanks is eighteen feet tall, and they have mixers and rakes and moving equipment submerged in them, of which we would have to be able to pull up very heavy pieces of gearboxes per se, that pick in our gearbox is probably five thousand pounds. Pick it up and then pull out the mechanism in order to do a replacement, where we could continue using the same tanks and kind of update it back a bit. And so that bridge crane, we asked for because there are many, many examples that would be years that we were wishing, and I did not do that. And so it's so, so useful. There are pumps on the floor below there that are big, heavy, and very long pumps, about fifteen feet. And so to pull them up, we don't even have enough headroom for a, like a mobile crane or a truck with a, with a cherry picker or something to get those out safely. We can, we've done it, it's very operating, really scary, can you end up, somebody get in and you're under it, and you have to be super careful, so. I, I just thank you, Mark, for letting me digress a little bit, but I thought this is such a great place to illustrate how important this is to us and why we're.
Yeah, yeah, that's outstanding. Yeah, so as mentioned earlier, we're, we're, we're talking with you today about a site plan application and a conditional use permit application. And those are also really in conjunction with as well a variance request that we'll be discussing further on Wednesday as well, but it's all, all plays into it. And yeah, the, obviously on the bottom left there, if you've been by the site recently, that's what the existing site looks like from the road staring at the, staring at the gate. I just took that late last year. So yeah, that's the existing conditions, and then the, for the new plant. So you can see in this picture at the right, sorry for all the words. I get a little wordy sometimes, but the, the picture on the right kind of shows in the big blue boxes, there's three blue boxes there, and those are the three buildings that we're looking at. There's a brown box that I drew, shaded box, and that's basically to call attention to a, a little space that is gonna house a generator, but it's not actually a building. So it might look like a building if you could see it from the road, but it's, it'll have a gap. So we're gonna kind of shelter that from the snow and stuff. So anyway, just as a quick orientation for the site, the, I don't know if you can see the cursor, but the medium-sized blue box is where the existing water treatment building is now. And we're, we're, we'd like to sequence the construction to build a new treatment building on the right there, that's the big blue box, and then replace the existing treatment building with a new storage building. That's the medium-sized box there. And the teeny little box down in the bottom left there, we wanna rehabilitate an existing pond pump station, so it currently draws water off the pond and pumps it in to get treated, so that's, those are the above-grade improvements we're talking about. So this first bullet, we're, we're basically updating the design and layout, and we've, we've, boy, sorry, I'm running out, running on a little bit here, but it's, it's, we've been working on this for years together, and our Janelle and I have, and it's, there's some really cool things that we, or we think they're cool, that we've worked into it. One of the things that we really like about this layout is we've pushed the building back into the hillside, and we've done that for a couple of reasons. One reason is. And we've done that for a couple of reasons. Um one reason is just to uh get it further away from the residents. Um but a another huge reason, which is hard to hard to see, I should have drawn like a big arrow here. But basically what we tried to accomplish with this configuration is to allow the bulk. Chemical tanker trucks that have currently been delivering um chemicals to the site. We're trying to give them a way to access the site safer. And what we mean by that is it's actually uh developed in a sort of drive-through configuration. So by pushing this building back into the hillside. We're actually using a portion of the building to allow these tanker trucks to pull off from River Road. Drive straight through the building and then pull straight on out to uh leave the building. It's safer, right? No, no, you can imagine like a a T shape, right, to have to back in and out of the facility, which is uh what they have to do now. Um so the it's just uh better overall for all kinds of all kinds of reasons. Um anyway, so that's uh sort of that first bullet. Um boy, commitment community, I mean, I can't say enough about Janelle and her folks. Um I'm a little biased, I suppose, but they've done uh really seem to have done an awesome job over the years um just uh. Commitment to the permit. And the community, it's been really awesome. Um improved efficiency, you know, energy, more energy efficient um equipment. Um flexibility and reliability. We've talked about that with you already, maintenance and such. Uh new design will increase. Yeah, so we've been seeing some increased uh metal concentrations in the water that's coming out of the mountain. And this uh better treatment equipment is gonna do a much better job of of removal. So um. We're really excited about that uh for us engineers. Uh next item, additional redundancy. We talked about that. Um and we thought we we'd mentioned a couple of um fire hydrants along the road. So. Uh the current facility uses a groundwater well for a little bit of water. Uh at the site, but what we're we're proposing to do is to tap off of Parkville's main, which is out in Highway ninety one there to the south. Uh run a run about a thousand feet of potable water line along the side of River Road. And um supply the new facility with with uh potable water from that for primarily for fire protection. And in doing that and in meeting um current fire codes. We would install two fire hydrants as well along the road. So uh like Janelle mentioned earlier, we've been. We've been talking with uh folks like Steve Boyle at the Fire Department to coordinate with them on what they'd need to not only protect the. This facility, but um enable, you know, uh improve the protection for the neighborhood as well. And um so that that water line will actually run. Uh almost all the way along, uh well, I should say probably about halfway or so along the north property line of the site. So um not quite all the way to Mountain View Estates, but um but quite close. So uh if they ever had issues with their groundwater. Uh source, uh maybe that future connection might be an option. But so those are sort of some of the highlight points. Um boy, I could ramble on and on, but uh any questions on on some of that stuff? All right, um let's shoot on. Oh, uh okay, yeah, so um a couple of. Uh by the way, this the the visuals in here, almost all of them are in the applications except for the history stuff. Um so this is a a rendering that our architects did. Um it it doesn't show I it's the engineer in me. I apologize. I feel compelled to point out that it doesn't show all of the details. You know, we're gonna have, for example, bollards, pipe bollards protecting uh the building and stuff like that, but it gives you a a general lay of the land for. What the what the intent is. Uh next one comes looking from the other side. Um. In fact, I'm sorry, I'm gonna back up a slide real quick, just because I I uh rambled a little bit about the bulk chemical tanker truck delivery. This is one of the sides that the truck would drive in through. It come off of River Road. Pull through this roll-up door here and then have the option of pulling straight on through the other side. Or if they didn't like that, they could back up, come into this big parking area here and pull back out lots of space, way more space than what we've got now. And then down here, this is uh the opposite corner of the building. We were just looking. Oh, yeah, I've included a little plan view with an arrow here, show it kind of trying to orient you a little bit, but. Uh basically, this is down below. Um the new storage building would be off to the right side of this. You can't see it in this view, but basically this is just um. It it's it it's a a good, it's a much bigger building than they have now, but it's packed with uh with uh treatment equipment in there. Um not as packed as the current building, that's for sure. Um and um before I talk about the requests real quick, one thing I realized, I'm sorry, Janelle, I'm going a little off script. I I probably should have stuck something in here just to let folks know about the schedule. Uh we've got something on the schedule in one of the applications, the site plan application. But basically, just so you know where things are at with the project in general, uh we're wrapping up the hundred percent design this fall. Uh then we would go out to procurement, meaning we would um solicit a construction contractor to do the the majority of the work. That'd take probably six to nine months or so, and then the actual construction on site would be intended to start uh maybe about. Uh a year or more from now and take, we're guessing on the order of about four years. So this is a super long-term project. Um we've been trying to wrap up the details here for a couple of years. We've done pilot testing on the. The equipment that the treatment equipment that would get used has been a a long time coming. So uh if you've heard any rumors about it that over the years, this is. This is kind of the culmination of of uh or hopefully the culmination of a lot of a lot of background work. Anyway, so that's kind of a a big picture on the schedule. And then uh the last cut, the last slide here really is on our requests for today. Um there's actually a second slide that talks about the variance request next, but this one is about the two things on the today's agenda. Uh the site plan application, obviously, that's really, um I think that's basically for compliance with the Land Development Code. Um and the second aspect we were talking about was the conditional use permit for the zoning. Um I I kind of tried to blow up the picture of the zoning map here to give you a a bit of a sense. I I could have drawn it in better. I apologize, but. Basically, the property is is zoned two different zones. The north half is one and the the south half is another. And so that's really what we're trying to, we're trying to kind of bring this full circle and make sure we're as as transparent as we can be with you all too. Um so you know, you know what what's going on out there. There there's no change in the land use. We've been treating water for uh decades. We're gonna keep treating water. It's really just trying to make sure we got our um our ducks in a row with with you folks. So th- those were the those are our requests for that. Um this is the next one. We're not. Janelle mentioned it earlier about the bridge crane. Uh that's why we're we're asking for a building height um deviation or. Sorry, that's probably not the right word, but anyway, um uh a building height uh variance. Um is to accommodate that uh bridge crane like she mentioned before. Um currently, we're at thirty-five or the zoning allows thirty-five feet and we'd be an average of about forty-five feet. So uh that was our 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 presentation to you um that. I I dragged that much longer than the fifteen minutes we were supposed to be. I apologize. Any any questions on all of that? Anybody?
That's great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, great. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks for the my question. Um, yes, I agree, and I I thought that was a a super way to start off this um application um to provide, you know, just a great presentation. Um so I'm going to only focus on the land development code. And um as uh as it explained, there will be a variance hearing on Wednesday in regards to um an allowance to exceed the maximum height. Um I don't think everyone knows, but that's in relationship, that'll be a condition of the condition use permit. Um and I think that um there's a few points, separate points that I have. Um I really liked that the program has been improved because your site plan, uh that's a really nice aspect as well. Um on the so from a land use standpoint, I think it's probably good to mention. Um gonna go uh thirty-five and uh boundary surveys. So we were able to track the parcel back to about nineteen seventy-three. Uh but they there's potential that, you know, the work fine line, though, we're always trying to identify if we have a legal parcel. And so we identified that that did exist before nineteen seventy-two, um we adopted. And um so there is a little room in there to say potentially um this didn't follow how still forty-five. So you've got condition, I just don't know what to explain it for the subdivision exemption. Keep in mind um that. The Bureau does have a way to either purchase the legal recognition or choose. Um you know, they don't have to, but this is more of a collaborative tier of conditions for that. So I've included um. Uh a condition about them seeking uh subdivision exemption, that would be the tool that would um legalize the parcel into a legal parcel. Does the your recommendation really need that kind of information on this parcel? I think that they're not. Don't necessarily need the permission, the legal recognition, not necessarily. So it's more that I am just, I want to make sure that if I'm applying land use code, I'm just doing it. Yeah, to any other application. So it 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 may or may not, you lose your discretion on if it's really unnecessary. Um we talked uh plenty of it about the Sony variance, the application was reported to the Lake County Office of Management, Public Works, the Sheriff. Public and environmental health, um Lake County Rescue, the county attorney, Department of Public Health and Environment, Colorado Department of Transportation. I note on that, there's no increase to the amount of traffic that's pointed and generated at the site. So so I had no concerns about their access. Uh Colorado Division of Parks and Wildlife, the Colorado Division of Resources, the Water Commissioner. Um to give them a go, let them have a patient put the water. Um and and Excel Energy and the Association Show. So we received, of course, that. Expect no um concerns or conditions from those agencies. Um another area that I just included in the staff report was our investigation into whether or not this application uh should be uh. Processed for so it's ten forty-one, which is a uh identifies areas of state interest. And we went through the designation, the uh criteria to look at different sites. And we also vetted this with legal, so we looked very long discussion. It's always been the thing in the staff report is that we found that it do not. Um uh was not a project that we do consistently with looking at ten forty-one, ten forty-one. Um in the staff report, there are um the probably the. Yeah, most uh we wanted it like a a line with the vision utilization of industrial water projects. But not for the purpose of providing um, you know, what not within the scope of what is happening within the plant. So. Um that whole discussion is now how we arrived at and that we did further that that would people. Um that that is not again a process that we would. Put anything to the competition. The only area that um we saw any suggestion of improvement to the plan was the site writing. Um and there is a really extensive paragraph with couple within the staff report. And so the only thing that we put in is a recommendation because we are very cognizant of our dark sky. Clients is that perhaps the applicant can find ways to reduce the number of. Our wall packs, exterior wall packs, they are fully done past, um but the current plan has forty-two of them. And so unless there is a reason potentially for C two or something that we hasn't seen, and there is a condition within. Uh the motion recommendation about potentially um decreasing that amount of outside lighting. Um everything else is appropriate and there's certain uh things that must like elimination of the pride of both certainly be uh in place. The approval criteria is all listed in the uh staff report. There's certainly points um. That I think really stand out. And um you know, they highlighted that the uh the way that there is. Plan that it's probably gonna have a grow, can we use or in structure. Uh holds in our government coordination and encourages creature land use. Um so this is, I think, remarkable. It also provides public water available to get used in residence that should basically choose. That's really significant as well as additional fire protection. Um so there is a not only a good neighbor uh with you uh Lake County, but also providing a really. The residence in that in that community. So that's uh a really nice um attribute as well. Um and then it it was uh very easy to uh find findings that that conferred with the applicants. Suggestion that they had moved that the critical criteria that are listed in that in the code. And simultaneously, you have opened both files and are considering the site plan. So the approval criteria is included for both suggested motions for both files. Uh keeping in mind, the site plan is decided by the plan commission. And as though you will act on that particular file, point two twenty-one. And but in the other file, the conditional news permit, you will be providing a recommendation to for. Um and commissioners and they will act on the um this application. So uh the conditions that staff has suggested, if an approval were. Desired are that file twenty, uh point two twenty, which is the variance application, I had a high variance application for. The lead law mine drainage tunnel water treatment plant shall be approved by the board of adjustment to the boundary survey shall be recorded with the program quarter. I'm sorry, I didn't want to tell a little bit of detail about that. It's a staff report, but I think it's a a benefit to G I F department. And to have that, it's that there were a little bit of discrepancy. And so reporting now with the program recorder just in increases. Our internal data and that would be helpful. So and it's already been included in the package. So it's just a matter of recording it. It's not any additional. Uh request for uh as a a new piece of information that the applicant doesn't already have. Uh number three, a possible determined to require the applicant shall apply for subdivision exemption of the property. I may explain that. And then four, the number of wall mounted elimination shall be reduced by at least twenty-five percent. Um that's certainly open to interpretation and thoughts on that, but staff has suggested that. Uh considerable usable number for reducing that amount of elimination on a site. And the conditions of approval are consistent for both applications. They track well together. Um so I would just ask if there are any questions for staff at this time or anything that you'd like to have more. Who has anybody in the session? So um I don't, I did not see, well, I just, I guess I wondered if the applicant had a question on the elimination. Is it a requirement? Like is it a requirement to have that much lighting or?
Yeah, uh well, just that Mark's team immediately when they got the report um from Paul, they've already started eliminating as many as they can. About twenty-five percent is reasonable. We don't think we can quite get fifty. But really, the purpose is we're gonna have a lot more security on the facility, a lot of hazardous chemicals and the way the world is. So the really the bottom line will be wherever we've got cameras and we're eliminating an area for security reasons, then that's where. You know, they will be required, but we we love our guys too. And so, yeah, we've already begun trying to narrow this down. We think we can use only that and probably exceed it. And so, yeah, we've already begun trying to narrow this down. I think we can easily, that is probably exceeded. Thank you. So that's good for you.
Yeah, yeah. And then I didn't, and I'm sorry, I didn't see whether you were applying the dark sky uh to all fixtures. I read specifically.
Fine, Paul. Um, but um, what are you putting?
They're all down.
Down.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great, yeah.
So that will be better than the one you've got now. They're just kind of like, yeah, but we only have one on each side of the building currently. So, um, yeah, we'll just have a little more security and about that. And of course, safety for there and there.
Do you have another? Um, I just wanted to take the opportunity to commend um the Bureau and Parkville also for their board and um to the districts. I think that is huge and um it's very exciting um to to kind of extend that infrastructure and Parkville having done that work, you know, a couple of years ago, um, for that potential. Um, this is pretty um exciting to see that, you know, another step happened.
Happened.
Um, and I, I, I imagine that you considered the size of uh that infrastructure to potentially feed. I mean, Mark mentioned it, um, but I'm, I'm assuming that the size of the diameter of the piping would be sufficient to feed the neighborhood should they choose to link it well. Um, I guess another question uh for staff too is, I just want to make sure, you know, in the spirit of a dig once policy that we actually get or maybe revisit back from Public Works on maybe line conduit in there for broadband fiber or something else that um could potentially share um the ditch, you know, work that you would be doing. Um, so that we don't have to, you know, go around. And I don't know what the uh like internet infrastructure out there looks like or if that's even.
I think it goes down the other side of the road. Um, but we can look into that and actually maybe we'll bring some time folks out to the site instead in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
And so I'll push that with her.
Okay.
And you know, we can all think about that. Um, yeah, boy, I think, I don't think there's fiber down that. But I don't know. I, yeah, our connection was certainly lousy, if I can tell you. I can't use my cell phone yet. So, but no, I appreciate that suggestion and any opportunities that we can find efficiency in that way.
Yeah, maybe I don't know if the person should see that or, or the provider, but um just make sure we can do everything. Yeah. Be efficient.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think my main question was just if the twenty-five percent was we were whole, so sounds like that is. You know, Howard. Uh, Howard, go ahead.
Your, your audio is actually getting worse. At least it isn't me. I don't know about Mark or Loopy or Jamie. Maybe it's my system.
I'm, I'm, I'm struggling a bit myself, sir, but it's.
Yeah, it's not you, Howard. It, it doesn't sound great.
Okay, sorry about that, guys.
No, it's good.
On the height of the building, you're building, building back into the hill. The height is the height from the bottom of the building to the top, not from the highest point of the property.
That's cool.
You know, offsets.
Any other comments or questions? Yeah, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak or ask any questions? At this time, we're entertaining our motions for both files in this public hearing. Yeah, almost that we closed public hearing for point two dash nineteen and point three dash. Um. Yes, sorry, I just confused the twenty-five. Twenty-two, twenty is very, okay. Uh, okay, uh, we have a motion to close public hearing for files twenty-two, nineteen and twenty-two, twenty-one. Um, can I? Hi.
Hi.
Uh, any opposed? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Files. And our funny business can really invest in. So now that everything's like before, do you think we should do it from the sound? I, can, can you guys hear us from the table? Is it just the public?
Heather, I could hear you. Uh, I think because you're speaking clear and loud and so I could hear that side.
Okay, it could be the dialogue in the audience just isn't picking up for tonight. Um, if you guys can hear us, okay, that'll be the remainder of this discussion. I just want to make sure you can participate in this part. So were there any questions or anything that you guys didn't feel like got even here based on your reading of the staff report or anything like that? Okay.
This is Chris. I was just going to chime in and just say that, that the audio has been somewhat challenging today in terms of not just with the folks at the table, but then, like I said, in the audience. Um, it has been garbled some, so I don't know if that's a function of the, the microphones that are picking up or, or what. But just, just let y'all know.
What about Tim will get right on it? Okay, well, thank you guys for your patience out there on that. Um, do we have any uh discussion on planning commission on the applications? Or anybody who'd like to come up and start off with a motion? Motion. I'll do the people to speak up to us a little bit. How about I do twenty-two dash nineteen and then off. Um, I moved at the planning commission, recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners of file twenty-two dash nineteen, a conditional use permit application to the Leno Mine Grainage Tunnel Water Treatment Plant at seven forty-nine Highway ninety-one with the following conditions. Um, one, that filed twenty-two dash twenty, a height variance application for the LMTT WTP shall be approved by the Lake County Board of Adjustment. Two, that the boundary survey shall be recorded with a clerk recorder. Three, if ultimately determined to be required, the applicant shall apply for subdivision exemption or for subdivision exempt of the property. Four, uh, the number of wall mounted illuminations shall be reduced by at least twenty-five percent. And finding uh one, that as conditioned, the proposed, the proposed conditional use is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies contained in the Lake County Council Plan. Two, that as conditioned, the proposed conditional use conforms to the requirements and provisions of this code. Three, that as conditioned, adequate public safety, transportation and utility facilities will be available to serve the subject property while maintaining sufficient levels of service for existing development. Four, that as conditioned, the proposed conditional use is not likely to be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare of county residents or to cause hardship for neighboring persons. Five, that as conditioned, the proposed conditional use is consistent with and in harmony with neighboring land uses and future intended land uses in the area. Six, that as conditioned, the proposed conditional use will not result in overly intensive use uh of the land relative to the surrounding land. Seven, that as conditioned, the proposed conditional use will not result in traffic congestion or hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Eight, that as conditioned, the proposed conditional use does not unnecessarily scar the land, which uh such use would be located. And nine, that as conditioned, the proposed site of the conditional use is and will be free from natural or man-made hazards or that such hazards can and will be more quickly taken. You're happy? Do you have any, um, thank you. Do we have any uh discussion on motion? And we will call, how are trip?
Hi.
Abby Domon. I, right, so, Bonnie, Joey Edwards. And we did go video.
Hi.
Thank you. Um, now we have entertaining a motion for file twenty-two dash twenty-one. And just a quick note that on the writing for the proposed motion, um, this references the wrong file number. So just make sure you use twenty-two dash twenty-one for that.
I'm making a motion. I'm moving the planning commission group file number twenty-two dash twenty-one. Site plan for the Leno Mine Grainage Tunnel Water Treatment Plan at seven forty-nine, however, nine with the following conditions. Number one, that filed twenty-two dash twenty, variance from the height requirements for relevant zone districts to approve federal and county board of adjustment. Number two, the boundary survey shall be recorded with the clerk recorder. Number three, if ultimately determined to be required, the applicant shall apply for a subdivision except for the property. Number four, the number of wall night illuminations shall again be reduced by at least twenty-five percent. In further findings, number one, it is conditioned that proposed site plan is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies contained in the Lake County Council Plan. Number two, that as conditioned, the proposed site plan conforms to requirements and provisions of this code. And the three, that is conditioned, the proposed site plan adequately addresses the submitted requirement, the submitted requirement items. Before that, as conditioned, the proposed site plan is consistent with and in harmony with neighboring land uses and future intended land uses in the area. And number five, that as conditioned, proposed site plan substantially complies with the requirements. Whoops. So. And number five, that is conditioned, proposed site plan is substantially in compliance with the requirements and provisions of section number six dot fifteen, design criteria.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, Howard trip?
Hi.
Abby Domon. I. I'm sorry.
Hi.
Joey Edwards. Uh, we did go video.
Hi.
We have a live. Both files are now approved and passed on as recommendations to the county commissioners. Both approval. One variance. So that's what we're doing. And all that's, thank you guys. Thank you again for participating and on top of us. Um, we don't have any old business on here, um, but I just wanted to quickly talk about the next. I just wanted to give us a quick update on the next meeting so that we're prepared for that one. Um, make sure so far that everybody can join in on that. So if you just basically on that. You know, I think that's, that's really great to, um, can everybody hear me okay? That's great. I'm trying to talk really loud. So, um, just want to make sure, yes, with this little bit of a hiccup, they're all tracking well. So the four files that would have been heard on July eleventh um have been renoticed. So um since we didn't Google those files on, on Monday, and I'm sorry, I didn't suggest a meeting and doing that. I had to re-notice them. Um, so I re-notice them all for our next meeting on uh August. Three weeks, that's not our next week. That's August twenty-ninth. Excuse me just a minute. Let me get my file. Let me, I let's, let me. Um, but those, those four files that were going to be heard on July eleventh now are August twenty-ninth. Those are why I asked for um that additional time. Um, and let me just get the schedule in front of us. I do know that um our August eighth is going to be, um, actually, I can do this. So August eighth is a rezone in Lost Canyon. We had another file, it was the Murphy file that was heard. We have a group of uh parcels down there that are zoned industrial mining. Um, but uh that area recently has had a lot of uh change in ownership and some different people have invested in that area and were aware of the zoning. And so the file that we heard on the Murphy rezone was one of those. So they bought and uh first of all, it was owned industrial mining historically and uh they wanted to use it residentially. We have now another parcel uh in that area that is, is wanting to rezone from industrial mining to recreational. And I will be sending that file to everyone, the application now that we've gotten through these today. I just didn't want to overwhelm everyone. And then two other um uh applications that we'll hear on August eighth will be the Tennessee Pats, uh Yurts. Um, those are a, a conditional use permit and a site plan review. So those are the three applications that we will be hearing August eighth. Um, and then the next um moving that in August will be the four um files that would have been on on July eleventh. So let me, um, I know immediately that is the accessory rolling unit located on Clark Street. The an outdoor and guide um initial use permit for the Twin Lakes uh in, I mean, conditional use permit for an outdoor and guide for the Twin Lakes General Store. And then, um, and then the code amendment for the special event uh facility. So um I think those are certainly the special event facility is something that we already discussed about in the work sessions on. Um, so that's what August looks like. And based on tonight, um, I was a little apprehensive about um the number of applications that we're going to be looking at. Um, but potentially, um, I don't think that we are overwhelming um anywhere on, on our agendas. And we were able to go through three different applications we think. And so it gives me a lot of um encouragement that those are, we have enough space. I'm not going to be looking at too many applications and wanting anything because I don't uh want us to run the risk of, you know, necessarily needing to take more time. Uh, but I think tonight was a good test, but I think we're going to be tracking pretty well. Um, we can talk, I can also just give you an update about um September. If you have anything you want to do. Um, it's always Slack project, everything. Yeah, um, so the um Arkansas Valley Slack Project um will be a mining C U P um that will be heard September twelfth along with a, uh, we have the physicist that is bringing forward a code amendment to the other C to allow mini storage in the I N zone district along with them uh use specific standards. And they were. Yeah, I don't know how proud about that from you. You know, you predated. Oh, yeah, that it was under the, so you was putting in your land use guy that allowed it. So, um, and then September twenty-sixth, I have on there for the car uh car near uh C U P. I just discovered today they're going to be out of the country and so they've asked for that to go to October. Um, the first meeting October, which will be ten, ten. I don't know if that's a lucky date. Um, so things I think are um potentially after we get through these applications, I think it'll be really good for us. Um, and maybe as we um know that this is what our schedule looks like, going back to kind of our priority list of items that we have talked about, wanting to um make sure that we start working on. I, I don't think that I can probably think of without um looking at future land use and um what we, what, what those priorities are. Um, I do hope that we're going to have an update um soon on our water augmentation plan and how that's going to affect development. Um, so I do hope that um we are going to have some time before the end of the year to be really intentional about um thoughts about future land use and some kind of strategic long range. Uh, well, for our community, uh, for Lake County, there is um currently quite a bit of work being done on housing. Um, that is, is continuing to track. Right now, the city and county are working on an intergovernmental agreement um to set up the regional housing authority. And so this is a lot of, of housing work being done right now, um, which is uh exciting work. And so there's continued work through uh community development department in correlation with um the Department of Housing or the Lake County Housing, let the Lake County Housing Department and the Housing Coalition um on the work on the sub-urban planning grant um for the funding that we received. Um, I think those are kind of uh the updates that I have. Gives you an idea on the applications. So expect this week to get on those, the applications that I just um mentioned that are coming up for your next hearing. And so those will all be coming to you probably tomorrow or Wednesday. And reach out to me anytime that you have a question about any of these files. And if there's additional information that you have a question on something, and reach out anytime. That's what your staff is going to, to serve you and to give that information. So let me know if there's any way that I can assist everyone.
Yeah, and I think I'll just add that. Um, you know, obviously, we all showed up fairly prepared tonight to not have a lot of questions outstanding. So in the presentation, obviously, I answered that really especially by what. I think that that's just the key to keeping things moving so that we're not, we don't have some of these outline or taking a lot more time on my hearing dates. So I just urge everybody to keep, continue that up. And if while you're going through any of that information, you have questions or points you want to be able to bring up at the public hearing, feel free to reach out to Anne or your list so that we're prepared for those. I think it was digestible when we got it, so I felt like we can.
Does anyone have a question or the August twenty ninth, I guess, making sure that that works for everyone? I did have to adjust that slightly to make sure that I met the thirty day notice. And that is, that's the basis of having to go to August twenty ninth instead of August twenty second. So that will work for everyone's schedule. Thank you, thank you, thank you for that. The only thing I don't know if Lake County has, October tenth is August day. I don't know if it's a. Never got really good. I hadn't even really, I just knew that October, you know.
It's. Now, October third is the day of the, to follow the state. I think that's the same for instance. This season. Hold on.
Ah, Jamie, go ahead.
Thanks, Heather. Just real quick, back on the theme of keeping things moving along. I'm super glad everybody showed up prepared and all that. If I recall correctly, in the DOLA training last time, they mentioned that instead of reading all of the conditions, we can say something to the effect of, as seen in the staff report. And I don't, please correct me if I'm wrong on that, but if we're going to have to be going through five or six of these in some of our future meetings, maybe we can do that to also keep things moving along. Do I remember that correctly?
Yes, you do. Uh, it gets a little bit tricky. I think we start to, we start to get a little worried. We run into a few issues of that in the past, but. But I think, I think moreover, my good boy Jamie, I mean, I think that you can say that. I think the findings are not, we'll look at one. I mean, going through those findings, I think that couldn't have been staff report. It might further take away from that with that I'm going to start recording the staff reports so that people understand, so we can go back in the historic institutional memory. You understand where the, how the conditions happen. And I pull conditional use permits now that were recorded several years ago, and I see the conditions, but there's no staff report, there's no basis. So how did that happen? So it's just kind of feeling kind of like you've got these conditions. And then, you know, for me and staff, I have to go back and I have to go pull the file and do a bunch of research to see if I can find a staff report and then understand how the condition log in. So in as much as I think it would potentially might take a little bit of time of reading the suggested motion, I think my greater takeaway from that is that I will now be recording the staff report, the official action record and the statement of motion so that we have a basis of knowing how did that all, you know, the conditions play in and why they came about. Because a lot of times I try to go back and say, okay, that was a condition, but I wonder exactly why it was a condition. And so that was my greater takeaway from that a little bit. But certainly, you could just reference the, as written in the staff report. They did, they go down to big work. As long as we have that staff work. And if we don't have to, and that if the conditions are right, they're not, they're not changes. It would. Save it in there and, and that really ensure that everything is.
Awesome, thanks for that, Anne. I appreciate it.
All in favor, adjourned?
Hi.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
See you.